June 9, special call, city council meeting to order. If you will please rise and join me in the invocation of the pledge.
Hey, flag down here.
Most gracious heavenly father, we come before you today giving thanks. Thank you for today because we know it's not promised. Lord, we ask that you wrap your arms of love and protection around us and around this city that we may continue to heal across the city and the state and the nation and move forward as one together. Lord, we ask that you endow our council members with the wisdom to serve you and to serve the people that they represent. Thank you for our blessings, forgive us of our sins, in your son Jesus' name, amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, item three, throw call. Sandy, you can note that all council members are present with each section, council member Pickens and Buchanan.
Okay.
All right, four is approval of the minutes in the June 2nd meeting. Those minutes were sent out. There are no additions or corrections. The stand approved as read. No proclamations today. Item six, invitation for public comment. Any items under first reading? If you in speak in favor of or opposition to, raise your hand at that time and you'll be recognized. First reading, consideration of a budget amendment to move seven hundred and fifty thousand from debt service fund balance to debt service revenue expense.
Good morning.
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 This budget amendment that's proposed would move seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the debt service fund balance fund to the debt service expenditure funds. And that amendment, what it would accomplish is provide a budget for the estimated amount that we've talked about in previous meetings that the debt service expenditures are going to exceed, which projected June 30th, the available budget. So that's what this would accomplish.
Any questions? This is a first reading, so I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of or opposition to, please raise your hand. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Cisco, second by Dodd. Any further discussions or questions?
Mr. Arnold, to be clear, this, this is moving the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars which is accumulated from previous or ongoing ordinances, budget ordinances, to move over into the debt service to pay for, for that overage.
That's, that, that's correct. I know it's been a little bit confusing with the, with these budget amendments. However, we're working really hard to be compliant with, with what we need to do this year. And the amendment that you all approved last week, I guess, on first reading and will consider today on second reading, that, that amendment really addresses unavailable, unavailable funds issue. When you look at revenues and unreserved fund balance, at the end of the year, we're, we need to be in a situation where we don't exceed the available funds, right? And so that necessitated the amendment that you all will consider here in a second, on second reading. A maximum amount we might possibly need to transfer from the general fund to the debt service fund before the end of the year. This amendment is related to that in the sense that one of the factors that contributed to that potential deficit fund balance in the debt service fund is the fact that our expenditures this year are projected to exceed what was budgeted. And another requirement of the comptroller's office is that that does not happen, right? So by reclassifying these, these available funds from fund balance up to the expenditure line item, we'll be compliant.
Okay. Do you have an idea of what the, the total gen- general fund balance draw is for this year?
Um, you're speaking, not just related to debt service?
Not just, not just related to debt service, but the total draw on the general fund?
Um, let's see, this would be about one point one million dollars, I believe. That's if you'll let me confirm that number, but I'm pretty sure that's, that's right. And that's a, is intended to be a not to exceed amount. For instance, the five hundred thousand dollars that's in the amendment that you will consider on your second reading, I don't anticipate it being nearly that much, but I wanted to be safe.
Okay.
Just everything we're doing is culminating to that draw, that final draw on fund balance. And will that have to come back for us as an amendment by the end of the year?
Yeah, we, we have to kind of prepare for these budget amendments in advance. And estimate, we won't really know what that final number is until we issue the June statements, but we've tried to be conservative. This amendment today is more of a, what I would describe as a, a, a technical amendment, just to move the money from the available debt service fund balance up to the expenditure.
All right, any other questions or discussions? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, seven yays, two absents.
All right, go to second reading, consideration of a budget amendment to transfer an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand from the general fund to the debt service fund. It's passed on first reading.
Move the approval.
Motion by Brooks.
Second.
Second by Cisco. Any questions or discussions? Counsel, please vote.
Okay. Passed, seven yays, two absents.
All right, item two is consideration of a budget amendment to approve Dog Park funded by Grant from Boyd Foundation. It's already passed on first reading.
So moved.
Motion by Dodd.
Second.
Second by McKelvey. Any further questions or discussions? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed, seven yays, two absents.
All right, new business. Have an update on the vacant property ordinance. Call in Stan to come up here and give us an update.
Good morning, mayor and counsel.
Good morning, Todd.
Back in September of nineteen, we started this process of establishing a vacant building ordinance. We developed an inventory of vacant buildings and we began to process those vacant buildings in a way of identifying which ones were truly vacant and needed to pay the registration fee. Those that were not vacant but were actually occupied and there was, it just looked like they were vacant or they were in the middle of a rehab or they're, they were being actively marketed. And so those were the categories. And so in the processing of those, we start out with, it was a little over a hundred and forty something properties, but we removed some from that list immediately because they were exempted like they were governmental owned or which the ordinance doesn't apply to. Then we ended up with a hundred and thirty-four properties. Fifty-five of those were truly vacant. Fifty of them were partially vacant, but, you know, didn't, for whatever reason, meet the threshold. Sixteen properties were available for rent or actively marketed. Eight properties were in rehab and five were multi-tenant vacant properties that, that we contacted those companies to provide information and to process them. So of all those hundred and thirty-four properties that we processed, we only have thirteen of them left. And I have turned those over to our city attorney and he is supposed to be processing them through summons to environmental court. I have also been in contact with our building official and his inspectors are going to begin the rotation again through the, through the active area to determine if there's any additional vacant properties that were missed the first time or have become vacant in the timeframe. So we, we haven't gone completely twelve months, but, but, you know, it's time to start that pass again. So that's our goal is to start that pass, identify if there's additional properties and then get these that are the last group processed.
And that, that environmental court process was slow due to courts being closed.
It was.
I think environmental court is, this week, did it opens back up?
Yeah.
Okay.
And also, you know, the inspectors would have started. Our plan was to start in, in the spring because of COVID. And because they're hands full with, with essential businesses and non-essential businesses, we didn't really be, we weren't able to start that process. So, so, but they have, they have been instructed and they're going to start that soon. Any questions?
Do, do we have a spreadsheet that we could kind of update from every six month check-in where we can see the changes that this ordinance may have or not have?
We do. We have a, we, you know, we track all these properties. We have them divided by how they were processed and in what condition they were in. Because what we'll do is when we start getting close to the twelve month mark, we will send out another letter, ask them to provide updated information to determine if they're still vacant or if they're actively marketing, to make sure they are actively marketing. In the, in the ordinance, you'll remember, the first year was kind of, if somebody provide us information of a MLS number and, and, and they had an agent that we considered that to be actively marketed. But the second year around, we're going to be looking for more than that to just, we're not going to just grant an extension if they provide us that same number. We're, we're going to ask them questions about what have you done in the last twelve months? Have you had any open houses? Have you had any offers? To try to determine if it's truly being actively marketed. Because just listing it and, and is not, you know, in my opinion, is not fully actively marketing the property. But again, we understand that some properties may be hard to market and we're going to use some, you know, some judgment and common sense. But we want to sh- see that they're making active strides in this area.
I have a question if I may, Stan, and you were reading from some documents, I don't see them in our packet. Can you provide us with those numbers that you were reading from?
Yes, sir.
And, and I don't, I believe this is part of the intent of the ordinance, but it will put us in a better position to collect the property taxes on these properties, correct?
We will have information, but again, that information that we have is information that's in the tax rolls. So, so if these properties, like we have a few of those properties where it's, the owners are deceased. There's no clear title pass to heirs or, you know, there, there's some legal, you know, clouds on the, on the title. So those, we're not really able to, to process. And, you know, we'll have to depend on, you know, other processes to identify them. But all we, you know, all we can use is the tax rolls as our, as our information on the, on the properties. So if that information hasn't been updated or there's been owners that have passed on and, and there's been no probated will or anything like that, then, then we're going to be, it's going to be hard to track those people down.
Thank you. Do we currently have a map of showing the distribution of these properties?
We do.
Okay. Could you provide that to the council as well?
Yes, sir.
All right, any additional questions? Thanks, Stan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item two in our new business is a consideration of a contract for Madison Academic. Owner representative? Remember Wallace is going to make the presentation.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today, we will be addressing the owner representation for Madison Academic School. The top three companies were WOD HFR, Watlington Construction, and MG Construction. Each of these had thirty minutes to present their proposal on June the first. Prior to June the first, one of the companies suggested using city employees to help lower the cost. These employees would not have additional responsibilities, but would be providing the oversight as part of their regular duties. Wouldn't be anything out of the scope of their normal responsibilities. So that is where option two came from. Option two still follows, as you received last night, this was the scope, the guidelines that we went through, the three pages. So option two still follows this two O T, but takes and allows city employees to do their job in place of paying someone to do that. So the committee recommends Watlington Construction, option two.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Which department would these employees be coming from?
Okay, at this time, then I would like Ben Smith to come up because he is, does this daily. And I want the expert to answer those questions, to go through any items. He could tell you what he does on a daily basis. He'll be out there three times a week. Thank you, Ben, so much. Good morning.
Good morning. My, my question was which department would these employees be coming from first?
Well, I, I work for the building department. Have for twenty years. I'm the commercial building and fire inspector. On a daily basis, inspect every commercial business, new business, new building, anything new that happens in the city of Jackson, construction related. I'm typically there taking a look at it, making sure that it's meeting code and that all the rules and regulations and guidelines are being followed. I have been already on site at this location for probably three weeks now, since the jobs already started. I've been out there every day looking at footings, foundations, as far as, that's concrete work, as far as progress of the building. And so it's, it's not anything that I don't do, like I said, every day, all over the city.
Ben, you're a city employee yourself?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I ask the question again, which, which department will the city employees come from that are going to be working on the project?
From the building department.
From the building department?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And do we have any idea of how many employees that will be?
Well, I have a minimum of three people from the building department that would be on site at any point during this process or lots of times during the process, as well as some from the engineering department, as well as the planning department. I have, again, like I said, I'm the commercial building inspector. I do mostly structural and fire inspections related to the building. I have another gentleman that works with, with us that does the electrical inspections, oversees all the electrical aspects of the building. And another gentleman that looks at plumbing, gas, and HVAC. So during the process of a building being constructed, we're always on site, not necessarily every day, but we're there a lot of the times during the process, looking at different aspects of the building, making sure that it's being done correctly, that it's meeting code requirements and that everything's like it should be.
And, and I guess my final question is, with your level of expertise and experience and what you've detailed to us of what you do on a daily basis, why do we need an outside firm to come in and, and do this for us if you, if you're doing that now?
That was a question I was, that I asked myself.
Okay.
When I was.
Then that's a good question.
When I was asked to join this committee, I, I just asked that to my committee co-persons and I don't know that I got a straight answer for that, but I just, you know.
Seems like I'm having trouble, problems too.
Yeah.
If I may, could I clarify on that?
Yeah.
So you do building inspections and, and manage the building department?
Yes, sir.
Do, have, were you involved in the city court project?
Yes.
Okay. Did you, were you involved in the budget of the city court project or change orders?
No, sir.
Okay. Could you share with us what particular items within the scope that was provided for this job? Which of those that you intend to take on under option two?
If you all would look at your scope of services, we have a number and we have highlighted the ones, and so you can look at your. We have about four or five. And before we move on, Councilman Brooks.
We don't, I don't think we have that number documented.
Okay. Oh, okay, we can do it that way. Okay. May I go back, Councilman Brooks? The thing that I had a question about and I want to make sure everyone understands is this will not be taking employees to do overtime. This will not be taking employees away from another project. This is only using employees in the scope of their job responsibilities that they have right now. And that's what he does on a daily basis. I didn't know that we were going to be showing this, so excuse my messiness, but I will let Ben go through this, the areas that he would normally be covering.
Ju- just a moment. So the, just for clarification for the group, there's, there's meeting code and code requirements, which Mr. Smith does on a daily basis. There's also the oversight of change orders, the project timeline, and amongst other more development level activities that Mr. Smith's department does not oversee. So I think we need to separate the two and, and understand that, that while this job description is, does have bullet points that, that point to making sure that codes are complied with, it also has bullet points that make sure that the plans are reviewed and that future costs, budget, and, and, and the change orders that are made throughout the project stay with the quality of the project and make sure that we're being delivered what we paid for. And that's, that's where, that's, that's where we, we have to understand, over the last year, we've seen two projects that were under budgeted and change ordered significantly where we weren't getting what the council thought they were paying for. So we need to make sure that moving forward, we have some oversight to make, to, to confirm to the council and report to the council any changes that may occur and to identify any holes within the project that the council needs to be aware of.
And Councilman Taylor, to address that, we have Jeff Watlington. Mr. Smith will tell us what he does on a daily basis. And then Mr. Watlington will go through the specifications also and then cover those areas that you're talking about.
And Councilwoman Wallace, just to make sure I'm clearly, clearly understanding essentially what option two is. So did we have some duplicate services in option one that we are now able to kind of separate? Take the work that's already being done by the city inspectors and incorporate into that reporting from the project manager?
Correct.
Is that what we're getting essentially?
Correct. That's what, and we really think it was great of the company, and I'll just say it was Jeff Watlington suggested it, that he said, you're, you're really doing this twice. And then I would be doing it and charging you for an oversight person to really be there daily. So, Mr. Smith.
Could Mr. Watlington come up as well?
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we will.
The, the, I, I, I agree with that, that sentiment, especially with the ones that I see.
Let's, let's move that back there. Where, where we have the confirmation that contractors and subcontractors are insured and bonded, in addition to building code compliance and local fire district, the, the state and local fire marshal looking over the project, those are items that currently take place predominantly within the city.
Correct.
Can we, do you have others on another sheet?
Lower number nine at the bottom, if you all printed that out or have it on your iPads, this one, and I will let both of you all speak to it, but this is.
Can we get a copy of that? I don't know if it's in my packet. I'm, I'm. Can we get a copy of it now? Could someone make that copy for us? And do we have a clean copy without your notes?
Yeah, I think.
We got a clean.
Do we have a clean copy without your notes?
Via email.
So let's go ahead and just maybe take it at the top. Councilman Taylor, if that would be okay, so then everybody could follow along and understand. And the first, change event management review comment, Jeff, would you comment on that, please?
Okay, in, in our option two, so I, I guess for y'all's benefit, I'll talk about option one and option two at each point. So to give you a little idea of what the vast difference is. Change event management is something that can be managed within the amount of time. So the amount of time in option two that I've devoted to the project is eight hours a week for an expediter, okay? Somebody to handle paperwork, push things through, make sure everybody stays on track, keeps their eyes on what's important for the city. Not for the developer, not for, for each individual contractor, but for the owner, right? For, for the city. Because they're the city's representative, they become the city at that point. And then five hours a week for a construction manager, okay? And so the construction manager would be like the expediter's employer, again, working for the city as an advocate. And with option two and option one, both of those things, change event management is not something that's going to happen every second of every day. It's something that can be managed weekly. And so in that, you know, taking your, your hour to understand and assess what this is. So that'll take an expediter and a construction manager to go through that point. That's one that, that, that we would suggest in option one and two both be performed by, by Watlington Brothers. And then, then moving on down, if you don't mind, Marta, I'd go on to, to number two. Ensure that, ensure that the contractor and the subcontractors are properly insured and bonded. Two, two things there. One is the city through its purchase department already does a lot of that, as you mentioned. And it's a, it's a little bit weird, this one, it's not like your normal design bid build thing. It's a developer deal and a leaseback and really complicated. Your exposure's pretty minimal in that relationship. You, you've minimized your exposure already. Option three, review plans, specifications, city level of school use, yada, 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 y'all get that, right? So the architect who drew it, obviously is being a licensed agent of the state, is a licensed architect, he's done that. Your city fire marshal, I mean, your, your state fire marshal has also done that. And then I don't know how many tens of thousands of dollars you spent to make him smart enough to do that. And he's really good at it. You have one of the best building departments in the state, y'all be proud of it. So they have, they have all done that. I don't mind doing it again, but, but I think it's pretty well covered. Then moving on down to the two bullet point, that's not number, there's four, submittal review. Inasmuch as the submittals for, okay, so there's like a bunch of y'all that aren't familiar how the process works. There's a ton of different materials used in a project. And the contractor, to make sure that his quality is up to par and meets the specifications, all right? So there's a difference in meeting and exceeding the specifications. It's his job to meet the specifications. And he wants to do that, right? So what he does is he takes a package that includes his materials and submits it to the designer for them to review, says, yeah, that's what we meant for you to use. The designer will review that and approve it, approve it with notes or reject it entirely. And, and I believe they're already in the process of doing that. What the, in, in option one, we would dig into that a lot further and go do a deep dive. It pretty well, in option two, it would be a more cursory examination that, hey, this is submitted, it's, it's, it's done. Either way, we would not want to review it until after the architect had approved it. We'd want to give the process a chance to work. And then we would look at the approved submittals. And after that, Ben and I both compare what is in the project manual to what's in the field, okay? Ben and I both do that. Ben's going to worry, and his department worry a lot about code compliance issues and is it exactly like that? We're going to look more at, does this submittal match the specifications? And is, if it's an equal but not what's specified, right? That's something Ben's not going to dig into too much. If it's floor tile, right? He doesn't care what color the floor tile is.
Right.
Just doesn't bother him.
Mr. Watlington, if I may, not to cut you off.
Sure.
Um, the question I still hadn't gotten answered was, and maybe you can.
All right.
Are which city employees will you be using, I guess, or working in conjunction with Mr. Smith?
Sure.
What departments those will come from and what those folks would be doing.
All right, let me summarize all of this, and if you want to go back, point by point, I'll go back. But to summarize.
Don't do the point by point.
Okay, to summarize, what we'll be doing, each of your departments for their purchasing, in their insurance review and, and, and the contract and the deal, they're used, okay, in their daily work. Planning, in their parking lot detail, their road usage, all that, all those ideas, planning is, is deep into this and they, and they do. The engineering also does, they're part of it. In their daily job, they do these things, these reviews, these assurances that were meeting codes, and they're going to continue. The building department is there doing footings, wall inspections, roughing inspections, above ceiling inspections. They're going to be doing those. above-ceiling inspections, they're gonna be doing those reviews. Uh, and then, in the end, we may pull on legal to give us some of these ideas about, have we dotted every I and crossed every T with our liability and with our obligations to close out in the funding required for the state and low, of local federal requirements? We'll be looking at those departments to do their part, and, and they're, we're gonna do them anyway, i- is what I understand, I mean, you can't not do it.
I think the concern, and, and, Mr. Watlington, I appreciate you kinda helping us out there and, because, in your honesty there, uh, 'cause there's a big difference in the two numbers.
Surely there is.
So, I appreciate you pointing that out. I think the, the biggest concern, and this is, you know, and no offense to any current city employees, but the reason we were amending the motion to have this owner rep was because we've had issues in the past with the two projects that were stated. And, and so, just, I think it, just in this whole process, we're already way behind. Um, I mean, it, it even begs the question of, if, if the motion was amended to include this, how did we even start the project? We started the bidding process, you know, we put it on hold in April and started it back up in May. Um, and so, I think when we get the information we've got, it, what's hard for me to reconcile is going back to kinda how we used to do it, and we've seen the results that that's gotten us. Um, and so, I think the big key thing, I think we're trying to get to it and touch on it, is what exactly, and like, is there a, do we have a contract put together of, like, laying these things out that we will see today, or are we just going off of the scope of services? Is that all we have?
We're going off the scope of services.
Yes, sir.
And, and so, in that, the difference in what you would get from the construction manager, or the, the owner's rep here, is that you get, out of fairness to both the, the, the city and the developer onsite, you get somebody who has a developed acumen with construction management.
That's right.
That understands both sides of the coin, that can help expedite their issues with you, right? And smooth those over, help you understand what's fair and not fair, right? As a group. Because all in all, this group of people is a fair group of people, and they want to be fair with the contractor a- as they are with their constituents. And so, a lot of times, when we don't have the understanding of the interests of the contract, of how contracting works, we lose that point and, and we get our feelings hurt unnecessarily on both sides, right? We want to smooth that out. What you, you'll also get is, is some experience in what we've had trouble with in the past, we've been in business since 1947. We've got a long list of, of wins, and we have some, we have some failures in our past that we've learned from. Uh, you get, you get that experience of what we've seen, and we've worked both in maintenance as far as ongoing building facilities upkeep, so we can look to where you'll be in 10 years, right? So, we may not can change, we can't change, let's just be honest, I can't change what heating and air units on that building today, it is what it is. But I can advise you of, here's where you need to be in 10 years when you take possession, we need to know these things and these things need to, you need to be ready to do this, right? So, those things, we can look forward for. The roof, right? We can look at the roof and say, "Okay, this is the roof we got, and with this, we need to have these expectations."
Yeah, and I think that's invaluable for the operation of Madison Academic Ongoing is to, and, and that's part of the scope of services, is helping them plan for those future repairs and costs that are down the road. If you were to communicate to them, "We have a 25-year warranty on this roof, you need to be prepared within 20, 25 years to absorb that cost again," uh, that's, that's great for them to be able to plan in a long-term fashion that way.
And Councilwoman Taylor, that was discussed, and he even gave some examples about an air conditioning unit, so that was some examples he gave, is he would give them an itemized, this is what you need to look for five years, for three years, things that they might not ordinarily be aware of, a kind of a plan to take care of it.
They have, they have a maintenance staff that has experienced these things, but we'd, you know, we'd like to just set, set a clean slate for this building, right? It would be, it'd be one that is brand-new from the start, and we'd get a start clean slate, we'd like for them to have that opportunity.
Councilwoman, did you ever, um, either, either bring into the conversation or discuss any of this with the developer?
I met with the healthy communities and understood that what their company does, how they do partner with the city, looked at some of the developments they've already done, went through previous work, um, I feel like they're very committed, I think that they're willing to work with us, but as a committee member, I'm trying to be unbiased and just bring you all the facts of-
I understand that you, I understand that you spoke with them separately, my question was, were they made a part of the meeting?
During this process, no.
No, okay, then.
This was only to look at the options to hire an owner representative.
Okay, and, and with that being said, are there any items on this scope of services that, that they would do anyway? And maybe that's a question for Mr. Watlington.
So, so let, let's look at, at that, right? Maintain observations, report logs, including work descriptions, work methods, whatnot, they're every day, they do have a daily log.
Sure.
Right? And so, in option two, right? We would have to have that done, because they're, they've got their daily log of whether and who showed up and whatnot, and they can share that with us, right? In option one, in option one-
Right.
A big deal, right? Perform onsite inspection, quality workmanship, so that is a daily thing, maintain observations, logs is a daily thing. So, those things you have to do every day, and you have to have somebody onsite to watch every single thing and count every person, right? That is a, one of the huge differences between options one and option two. They'll share with us, uh, their, their daily logs of who showed up and who didn't. Of course, we can do our weekly walkthroughs, our twice-weekly walkthroughs, our surprise walkthroughs, just to, just to check, spot check, right? They don't check every cookie to see if it's got the right number of chocolate chip cookies, uh, chocolate chips in the cookie, right? They do spot checks. And so, this is what the quality control from us would be in option two, as opposed to option one, which would be there every minute of every day.
And, and in a perfect world, I'm sure, Mr. Watlington, you would advise us to choose option one, right? Wouldn't that be the best thing to do?
I don't know that it is always the best thing to do, it's, it is, the best thing to do involves a lot of scenarios, right? The best thing to do is a big word. It, does it offer the greatest opportunity to ensure the long-term quality of the project?
Of course.
Yes.
Okay.
Does that make it the best thing to do, not necessarily?
Okay, and then my, the follow-up question to, to, to that is, seemingly, the argument is, the project has started, how long ago, Councilwoman?
It would be two and a half months if we started Monday, if we hired-
No, no, I'm saying, maybe you don't know how long they've been working on the project.
Yes, it's been, it's been two-
Several months, okay.
Two months.
Does that beg the question, that it's too late, Mr. Watlington, to, to, to come on board to do all of this stuff? They're, they're three months into the pro- process now.
Right, so, is, is it too late to make sure that the firewalls go all the way to the deck? Is it too late to make sure that we have soldered joints in the copper rhythm, propress fittings? Is it too late to make sure that we follow the submittals in the floor type and the window type? No, it's not too late for those things. Is it too late for me to look at the rebar in the foundation? Yeah. Ben, did you look at the rebar in the foundation?
I have.
All right, okay. Which, which is why it begs the question again, is that's why we should choose option one, right?
Option one, it offers you the best opportunity to see, to lay eyes on each thing and provide you an onsite representative to represent just you, right? That they wake up every morning thinking about you, and what's good for you and nothing else. That's, that's the best opportunity for that is option one, okay?
And, and Councilwoman, my last question. So, are you, are you urging us to, to select option two? Is that what you're here to say?
I am, I am bringing you the facts, and I wanna bring and do that to the best of my ability.
Mm-hmm.
But as a voting member of the council, I am saying from a committee point that option two would be the most favorable and the best for the city for the dollar. And, um, but as a voting member, I, I just wanna present the facts to you the best way, and I would also like for Mr. Smith to dr- uh, to direct some of this to him, to also talk about what he's already done, so we can kind of look at this fairly from both sides.
Can I ask, Mr. Watlington, one quick question, what you just said?
Sure.
It gives us the best case of you waking up every morning thinking about our best interests with option one. Does that change in any way with option two of you guys waking up every morning thinking about our best interest?
Sure.
I mean, which, I know we're mixing services with city employees, but-
Yeah, what you have-
Does that mindset still hold?
You have fewer people thinking about you, right? So, with, with option one, you have one of my staff members devoted to you 40 hours a week, right? With option two, you have one staff member devoted five hours a week and one devoted eight hours a week. So, they have lots of things they're thinking about, not solely you, they have a lot of other obligations, just as any inspector would.
Right.
Right? Any, 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 any accountant, any lawyer, any professional has more than one client, right? So, but with, with option one, you have one man that shows up every day, he goes down there and he looks at every single thing every day, makes his report, and we develop, we have a, a software program we're proposing to go with it, so he logs everything in there. Uh, now, this, this wouldn't be, uh, obviously, it would take a great deal of cooperation from the developer in its sense of, of access and whatnot, which I, I'm sure they, they would be happy to do, 'cause we would be working together cooperatively for the best quality product, not as competitors are good and bad.
I have a question to stand. Now, as dead point, we have several oversight people in place right now, don't we?
Okay.
For this project.
And I'll put that up on the screen also.
Because, I mean, I'm having a problem with, we have several oversight people.
Yep. Let me, let me throw then for that, Johnny, we have, like we said earlier, the, the building department and, and the engineering department, planning department, we're all onsite throughout the project. You have the state of Tennessee fire marshal who is onsite, TLM, not TLM.
Looney Ricks and Kiss.
Looney Ricks, L-R-K is our tech.
Looney Ricks.
Okay.
And then, TLM is engineering.
TLM usually has someone that's onsite during the process. So, we've got four or five people already, or, you know, groups of people.
Besides the other people that we have doing oversight.
Right, that are, that are looking at the project, and, and a lot of what we do doesn't necessarily revolve and, and, and deal with the money aspect of it, but it does deal with the project as far as it meeting code requi- requirements, a quality job, and, you know, trying to keep the job on schedule as much as possible.
'Cause I, I just don't feel like, I mean, based on what we just, we just laid off over a hundred and some people-
Right.
This past year, that's iPhone phone pharaoh, and to, you know, we've had people in place already. We have a company that I think has been doing great work in this community, the other people that you have named, that's gonna be part of the project. Uh, I think they should have the best interest of our city.
Right.
Uh, and I think at this time, to even be spending more money, if we have people in place that can make sure this project is taken place, you's there every day, they say you're gonna be there, we need to, need you there every day, we need to put you there, but I just don't see us spending this much money again and duplicating the same job that's gonna be taken care of with people onsite.
Councilman Brooks, this might be a good time to ask Mr. Smith what he has already covered when you were concerned about the timeline.
To, to count, before you get to that, to Councilman Dodds' point-
You can ask him that question, Councilwoman, you're sitting next to him.
To, to, to Councilman Dodds', uh, to Councilman Dodds' point, yes, we do have oversight, uh, from the building department, from the fire marshal, that's typical for every job that we do, um, that, for every job that's constructed within the city. Uh, that unfortunately has not led to us finding budget holes and scope holes within previously constructed projects. Uh, we just approved to build a, a building, uh, so if we look back at our, at the year, we've approved to, to construct this for the school system. Uh, and we need to make sure, the way that I would equate it, it's like buying a home without getting a home inspection. We need to make sure that we get the home inspection, that we, the city is covered on all future capital projects. To Mr. Watlington's point, it would be ideal, and to Councilman Brooks, it would be ideal that this, this individual on future capital construction projects would be hand-in-hand with us from the beginning of the conception of the project to help us walk through the steps. Unfortunately, uh, we, we did not have that person in place. Uh, it was amended onto the motion to approve the project that we do this. We've now been 120 days since approving that. With, with starting and stopping, uh, we've lost time, uh, two and a half months that the, that constructions began without the oversight that we all voted to approve. Uh, and so, now, here we are trying to, to backstep on having oversight. We need it. We need it for our capital projects, we need it for our fiscal management of the city, wh- these are things that we have to put into place. If we don't, we will continue to have things pop up, we're spending $700,000 extra on projects that we didn't budget for. And so, we have to put these things in place so that we can manage the taxpayers' money in a more appropriate way.
And I agree with you, but I think this project is frail on, and we need to move on, 'cause we need to get this project under, you know? So, we'll make sure our kids have a better schools and this community's moving forward. I mean, right now, I agree with you, we can make and put this in place that we will make sure on further projects that we have somebody in place to do that. Uh, but right now, I'd like to make a motion that we deny and for oversight for this project.
Second.
From the city.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Watlington, so-
That's my line, Marta.
I know, I'm sorry.
She came down to, took the podium there, she's taking over.
So, in the event we partnered with you on-
Paul, just mayor.
In the event that we've partnered with you on this task, um, yeah, we do have, our developer at least has, uh, has a, a finable amount for every day, they would be late with the completion of the project. Uh, so, out of respect of that, do you feel that if we worked with you here, you would be able to, I guess, peacefully coexist and not hamper their progress and their efforts along the way?
It wouldn't be our goal to hamper their project, our, our goal would be to enhance their ability to meet the schedule. Uh, it, so, when, when there's some things that don't get done, decisions don't get made, and things drag on, he's off the hook and you're holding him up, that's where we can help you in the schedule part, right? I can't make it not rain, let's just be honest, I can. If I could, that'd be a cool trick, and I'd do it a lot. But what I can do is I can stand up and say, "Hey, guys, he's asked for a resolution, a question, a solution, these are the options, you still haven't given it to him," right? Or-
And we get that in option two.
You get that either way.
Okay, and that's what I think I was trying to clarify.
You get Jeff, Jeff being brutally honest with you, which you will not always like.
Sure.
Okay?
But we need.
Uh, that, uh, that's not always a good, that, that's always a good thing, most people can understand that, that it's, the answer you will get from me will not always be the popular answer, it will not always make you feel good, but it will help move the project along. And it, so in that, rather than being a detriment to him, we hope to be an asset that helps get him to where he needs to be to do his job, 'cause too many times, the owner is an impediment to, to success.
And Councilwoman Wallace, um, you know, we've obviously covered the fact that the project has begun, quite a bit has already been completed. Out of respect to that, this bid that we're considering today, how, how is, I guess, where we are in the timeline, how has that impacted the, the bids that we received, the pricing, uh, 'cause, assume some of these steps have already been performed, and perhaps you could help us do, Mr. Watlington, but how has the late start, so to speak, how would that impact the bid process and the service we're asking for?
Okay, we estimated that at this moment, we're two and a half months behind if we hired Watlington Construction and he started funding. So, what I would like to do is for, is for Mr. Ben Smith to cover what he has already encountered and looked at, and he can give a better answer, because he was doing it daily and gave us the daily date.
Well, I, I guess, I guess what I need to clarify is, all right, so, did we bid this service out, um-
Like-
Based on the, the starting milestone of the, you know, of the whole project, I mean, are, did-
No.
Have we priced in what we've already missed?
No.
'Cause I guess what my concern is, are we going to, uh, would we essentially pay for things through the scope of service that have already been performed? Has that been factored in?
You wouldn't be paying for what you've missed.
Okay.
From Mr. Watlington, any other company that we met with, they all gave us a starting date. From Mr. Watlington, any other company that we met with, they all gave us a starting date of sometime in June, I think. I don't remember the exact date, but so basically from now to fifteen months out.
Okay.
Which is the estimated timeline of of the job. So you wouldn't be losing anything. You would be losing the ability for Mr. Watlington and his company to see some very important aspects of the building project. Now, paperwork and all that stuff, they can always go back in and look at paperwork and say, okay, yeah, it looks like you did this. You got this covered, whatever. But as far as visually putting their eyes on the construction process, that's what you're gonna, that's what you're losing by being two and a half months behind, which pretty much I've taken care of. My, I've had my eyes on the project. I've been there just about every single day. You've also had, like I said, the state fire marshal out there, a representative from T L M. And we've also, I didn't mention earlier, but C M L, who is a local company here in town, is called Construction Materials Lab. They do testing of concrete. They do soil testing for compaction. They do structural, they do all kind of special inspections. And so they've been on site as well. And we can get you copies, I always get copies of their reports at the end of the job anyway. But, I mean, so all this stuff, you're really not losing much of anything, to be honest. Because like I said, I've been there and I've seen it, and we've got these other folks that have been there. They've seen it. There's somebody, I don't know who, may work for the developer. They've been on site every day taking pictures of the progress and supposedly have a portfolio of the pictures.
So on the number of option two or either one, that in the scope, the one year of post occupancy assistance, so is it projects completed and then one year?
So so in, so in that, yes, I've got a week figured, a year from the end of July. So right before school starts, the the second, for the second full school year of that building starts, I've got a week figured for for us to go back with them and go back through the punch, a punch list, a one-year warranty punch list. And and so, and that's, that's something that everybody has in their in their spec book, and nobody actually does. But but it's in there. And and to your point of of is it too late? It's too late for me to change the drawing statistically, significantly, right? I'm not going to recommend a new roof for you. I'm not going to recommend a different heating and air unit for you, right? That ship has sailed, and that's not included in these numbers, right? Now, what I am going to do is say, hey, with what you got here, you may need to look for this, or you may need to look for that, right? Or if there's a tweak that, in my experience, is different and could offer you a better chance for success at at low or no cost, I may recommend it or suggest that we explore it. It doesn't mean that anything will come of it. It would just be exploration of an idea. As far as, you got the list there, and it's a good list. L R K is a good company. T L M, obviously, we all know T L M. If we look back, C M L, we've all used C M L. And and to to your point, they're all looking out for this project. All of them work for the developer. None of them work for you.
All right. We have a mo, what is your motion again, Councilman Dodd?
Motion to deny our oversight person for this project.
I don't think Councilman Dodd's motion falls in line with the procedure of Robert's Rules of Order. As this motion was amended and attached to the approval of Madison, we would have to go back and revisit that motion.
So do I need to make a motion to?
It would be to rescind oversight of the project, require a two-thirds vote.
I don't know if that's correct, Councilman Taylor. I I would think that under Robert's Rules of Order, he could have made it an amendment to to your amendment.
The amended motion was already passed.
Motion's passed.
The original amended motion's already passed, so it had to be rescension of the.
I'd like to make to make a motion to rescind the motion that we amended to hire oversight person for the, on the city project.
Second.
Okay.
Question. As part of this discussion, and Council Wallace's moved back up there, do you know why we delayed the vote on that initially?
My guess is we were in the middle of COVID, but I do not have a direct answer to that. But it was in the throes of COVID.
Mayor, do you have an answer to that?
There was some some miscommunication with how we put the bid out, and so it didn't go out as far as it needed to go. And so we had a limited scope of 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 people putting, companies putting a bid on it. So we rebid that, and it included those additional opportunities for people to, for companies to put their bids in. All right, so there's a motion to rescind the oversight of the project. And there's a second. Any further discussion?
I think the only discussion is back, I'm just curious what's changed in the timeline of when we, I think we approved it seven to one on the amendment back. And I guess, when was that, March or February?
February.
Yeah. And so I just, to me, everything we've been through, trying to figure out why now we, you know, we have proposed that we don't need this oversight.
My my understanding was, is that we, that was the the decision that was made, that we did not need that. And that's why it was pulled. That could have been, that could be incorrect, but that was my understanding.
Why why it was pulled?
Right.
Yeah, it was my understanding that.
Why we didn't vote on it. Why we didn't move forward. We we approved it.
Yeah, and and I may be incorrect on the timeline here, but it was my understanding that there was an email sent that was drafted by the CRA and Healthy Community to the planning director that came from the mayor saying that they had oversight already.
That 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 what?
That came through the, through the planning director.
That was not the cause of the the pause on it. That was just an informational email.
Okay.
I just, I can state again why the cause of the pause, but that was the cause.
Okay.
Hey, Mayor, I know we're going to spend people's money, but what is active, the motions?
The motion?
Yes.
The motion is to rescind the, rescind the oversight amendment.
It's it's not to do this.
Right.
It's not to hire Mr. Watlington. That that's the law.
Or anyone.
Right, or anyone.
It's what you're saying, like, to rescind, you're rescinding the amendment to have oversight, having someone.
Yeah, yes, would be true to to have no, yes, would be to have no oversight.
Yeah, a a yes vote is to rescind the oversight. A no vote is to move forward with the oversight, to bid on with the with the oversight recommendation.
Right, and and to clarify, it's not, it's not, excuse me, to 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 clarify, it's not to not have oversight of the project. I think we've had, you know, testimony from here that there is oversight from, on the project from several levels. The CRA, the investor.
Not to have an owner representative.
Yeah, we wouldn't have an owner representative.
Not to have an owner representative.
Which I think we've seen where that's gotten us.
But we're technically not going to be the owner of this building at any point, correct? I mean, we're essentially financing the product, so I mean, the term owner representative, maybe splitting hairs here, but.
All right, there's a motion and second on the on the table.
Quick question, Mayor. If we even do the rescinded, we don't even have to do the other vote. If we remove this project amendment, say, we're not gonna.
If we, if the rescension is two-thirds vote to to rescind the oversight, then there is no owner representative oversight on the project. So there is no vote on the contract or no vote on a on a proposal. Everybody understand what they're voting on?
How does the two-thirds play in to members that are absent?
They don't, they don't, two-thirds of members present.
So two-thirds are present.
Two-thirds of the members present.
So we gotta do math today, too. Okay. All right, any further questions? Council, please vote.
Are there two-thirds?
I'm sorry, I'm taking my time.
You gotta do some math.
Exactly.
Seven of us, I think that's two-thirds.
Five to two, most of them passes.
Was that two-thirds?
Yeah.
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 Okay.
Yep.
All right. Item three in our new business is revision of debt management policy.
Our existing debt management policy limits our annual debt service as a percentage of our total property tax revenues, including I D B and pilot tax revenues. It limits that to twenty-six percent. The proposed budget and next year's debt service requirement that you're going to entertain beginning next week, that calculation is twenty-six point six percent. So my recommendation is we need to revise our current policy and increase that to twenty-eight percent.
And questions from council?
Just one question. This is dealing with fiscal year twenty-one projections, right?
Yeah, we'll need to look at it every year.
Do we need to, okay, that's my question. Do we need to hold off on this until we have the budget hearings?
We we could. Of course, our debt service for next year is set already. That requirement is already defined, and our budgeted property tax and including pilots and I D B revenues, they're estimated already, and, you know, I don't see those. I I suppose if you voted to increase those as a result of the budget hearings, this amendment might not be necessary.
So this will be the second time this year that we've increased, or?
It would be.
Does the state frown upon a certain level?
They just ask for a policy.
They just ask, so we could have fifty percent?
I think so, yeah.
And and. There's no cap on the policy? They just ask that the local municipalities have a policy submitted to the state.
Okay. Either, are there? Yeah, I would move to table this until a later date when we have a clear picture of where our revenues might land.
Second.
Motion. Second to table. Any further discussion?
Who's second?
Uh, Brooks.
Brooks.
One, two, three. Okay, council, please vote. All right, item four in our new business is a consideration of a resolution to support an application to the Economic Development Administration for the Public Works and Economic Adjustment Assistance and Care Act Grant for Effie Wright Access Road. We have Lauren Kirk, who is the constructor of the grant, I guess, and she'll make a present sentence.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So before you, you have a resolution in support of a grant. As you know, our policy at the City of Jackson is anytime we apply for a grant where there's a match, we present it to council. We'll be applying for the cost of the access road at Tiger Jones Industrial Park, which, if you recall, this is part of the Great Wolf Lodge project. The city owns that property. Therefore, at this point, we would be the full responsibility of putting in the access road. But local discussions of assistance is not out of the question. Southwest Tennessee Development District is applying for us on our behalf. The reason we're applying right now, instead of waiting on more information from the state, because of course, the state incentives for this project were pooled, and now we'll be waiting till January probably to find out what those incentives will be, is because this is Special cares Act funding from the E D A, so we need to apply now. And if we aren't granted a grant in this round, we can apply and we'll submit the same application essentially in October for their regular public works funding. We're applying for about fifty percent of the cost, which is at or slightly above their average award. We're also going to be applying for a Delta Regional Authority for one million dollars, since this project does have a regional economic impact. So that would take the cost from six point four million that the city would have to shoulder all by themselves to, if we get this grant, it would go down to two point four million, and we'd of course look for other local assistance to make this road happen. I'm told that we probably won't be notified whether or not we get a grant for another six to twelve months, which is fine, because we're probably eight to twelve months out on the Great Wolf Lodge project anyway. And then if awarded, we would have two years to complete this project. So it's not like we're expecting to fund this out of our budget this upcoming fiscal year. And then if we, if Great Wolf Lodge decides for some reason not to come, we can decline this grant. We don't, we're not stuck building a road for nothing that's going to come. But we don't have any indication at this point that they're not committed to come. So happy to answer any questions you all have.
I have a question. This, this this round of cares act funding, the one point four billion, that's just, that's solely through the E D A. There are billions of dollars going to other departments, COVID-related, that deal with other issues and other things. This is just one piece of it, right?
Yes, yes, this is solely cares that funding through the E D A. And when we talked with our E D A representative in Nashville, who deals with our region, because our state competes with other states in the Atlanta region, like six other states for funding, they felt like this project was the best use for that, because it has that economic impact that they're looking for with these dollars. Whereas if we applied for any number of other needs that we might have with COVID, it wouldn't have that competitive advantage.
And speaking of other needs, dollars that would come down specifically for citizens of Jackson for any any COVID-related reasons, have you reached, researched, or sought out any of those type of grants as well?
Yes, and unfortunately, I believe Mayor has talked about this a little bit, but because of the size of our city, we're not, we're not eligible for direct cares act assistance. And that is really unfortunate because we need it. So we're getting whatever the state decides to allocate us, and we'll have to put that toward roads. But I know that there are other entities like Jackson Transit Authority that has received some cares act funding, and so we'll be interested to see what the plans are with that.
As well as J H A, correct?
Our our hope, Councilman, I talked with Congressman Custoff last Wednesday or Thursday, is that there won't be a direct stimulus from the federal government. But according to the congressman, the the monies that the state receipt, states received for COVID nineteen and the stipulations they had on there, he said his words, where there's no lawful way for them to spend all the funds that they received. And so they're looking at working on a a bill to direct those state funds to municipalities and county governments with populations over fifty thousand, which puts us right in the category. So that's what our, that's what the next phase of of the funding may possibly be. He didn't give any indication on what the dollars would be or how they would come down, but that's what they're working on.
Mm-hmm. Because it is, and for the record, Mayor, as you know, the the latest round of funding that was not approved was money coming to cities, our size. So that's unfortunate that that did not pass, but thank you very much.
Mrs. Kirk, so do we have any any updates, so to speak, as far as Great Wolf Lodge's commitment to continue working with us on on this project?
They're at, there's, we're at the top of their list still. The the private acts will be come back to this body probably July or August. They were approved at the state level. They'll come back for us to ratify at the local level. And then when the legislature resumes in January, then they'll take up what a, the original proposal from Great Wolf Lodge on the funding was a tourism development zone. And so that will be taken up in January, which, according to Great Wolf, works out well for them because of COVID nineteen, it kind of pushed all their operations back. And so they'll take that up again in January, and we can, we'll work that, and that'll be the final piece of the puzzle. We've done everything that we possibly can do at the local level. Right now, we're we're waiting and depending on the state to to fill their piece of the puzzle and and make this deal complete.
Thank you, Mayor.
And our chamber has been speaking with them weekly, and they they have not put the money into site development anywhere else that they have here. So they're already vested here in terms of engineering and soil reports and all that.
Did our, I saw, you know, pass planning commission on May twenty-second. So did our planning department put these numbers together? Is that where we got that?
Yes, yes, we got an engineering bid for that.
Okay, and I know there's the disclaimer at the bottom, but so we've put, based off previous projects estimations, we clicked this together on this, the six point four. But then, going back to what you said, if we get the grant, we could get that possibly down to two million. But we're not expected to pay that for another two years.
Yeah, we would have, we would have up to two years to complete the project.
So we're not planning for this in fiscal year twenty-one?
When when did the city commit to building the road?
We haven't firmly committed to commit. We have been in conversations with the county and the, and Great Wolf Lodge on how the road will be done. We told them that it, local way we'll do it, that we'd be responsible for. There's been conversations with the county that, I won't put words in the county's mouth, but possibly, you know, a temporary ownership of the property. You use their their improved act funds to do the the road construction. And so the conversations on how the road will be done will, are still up for negotiation. I think that the initial committal for the local responsibility for the road was done prior to July one.
So if we approve this today, there's, does the E D A allow for modifications to the grant as we negotiate with the county on participation in the project? And And, you know, is my understanding that the 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 road was gonna, you know, does, maybe somebody who helped put this road, put the cost estimate together, is this with bridges and, or is this culvert bridges, you know, what level of road are we getting?
I'll answer the grant part while Stan's getting up here, but what you're approving today is allowing us to move forward with the grant application. And it's saying that we're gonna apply for three million, and we're gonna get that other three point four million that it's gonna take to complete this project through the D R A grant, through our own capital funds, through the county, whatever ways, but we have to come up with that funds outside of the E D A, that's what we're doing.
We enlisted the services of Alexander Engineering to estimate the cost of the road. So we, we as planners, we're not engineers, so we we didn't just draw a line on a map and say, oh, it's gonna be about this. We had, we had a very Alexander of Alexander Engineering look at it, and he basically performed an analysis based on engineering practices and and came up with his best, you know, estimate of the road at this point. But but keep in mind, we're very early, this is, you know, there hasn't been a whole lot of detail put into this in terms of, you know, getting out there, surveying, you know, there's been some environmental reports, but, you know, as we move into design, this amount could move, so this is the, but this is the best estimate we have at this time.
So this is a, this is a four-lane mediated road is what's estimated presently?
Right, Council, we're we're not voting on the road construction, we're just voting on the the grant application.
The grant application based off of an estimation on a typical road section.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But I guess my quick question is, if if we do approve the resolution, does that, does that lock us in for the remainder of the cost?
No, we can deny the grant, if we were, if we are received, we are the recipients, we can deny the grant.
Is the grant capped at three million? Could we ask for the, or is that a?
We probably wouldn't get funded for anything more than three million, I'll just say it that, because it's, it is so competitive.
In the ask of asking for a certain amount, not the?
Yeah, because with this, with this particular CARES Act grant, we could ask for eighty percent of the project costs, but we're not gonna get funded for that if we're competing against a community outside of Atlanta who has a higher economic impact, lower costs. So this is gonna be the most competitive advantage to ask for fifty percent, and if we end up having to reapply for the regular round, it's a fifty-fifty match. So we're already set to move that application to another round, if we need to.
Motion to approve.
I'm second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Wallace, any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passes, thank you.
All right, no further business coming for the council, we will adjourn.